It's the Mad Hatter Show, it's the podcast and two incredible guests here today. The Commish Rodney Ellis is in the building and of course, the lawyer of all lawyers, Mostyn, Amber Mostyn that is. Now, this is gonna be interesting because we're gonna be talking about Juneteenth. And this is a conversation that me and you started a year ago.
Right.
As we were rolling through the parade, having conversations and I guess we should be waving to people and doing that kinda thing. But a lot of, this is, this is kinda like somewhat of a fact and some, no, this is fact. There's still not a lot of people that understand Juneteenth. There's still a lot of people that look like me and you sir, that still don't know what Juneteenth is. They know that there's a holiday, there's a celebration and probably a sale somewhere that says Juneteenth on it. So I actually wanna go back and start with, what is Juneteenth? Why is it so important to people that not only look like me and you, but all people? And I'm gonna start with you Commish, if I can call you Commish.
Juneteenth is an opportunity for us to learn more about American history. Amber, being a good lawyer, will have the dates, I may get it wrong. Emancipation Proclamation was actually signed by President Lincoln, I believe, in September. In fact, we ought to do something around that date.
Okay.
Eighteen sixty-three.
Eighteen sixty-three, September.
Hundred and sixtieth anniversary this year.
And he decided to have it go into effect New Year's Day, January the first.
That part I did not know.
Yeah, so the rest of the country really accepted the Emancipation Proclamation for the most part. We may not be sure about some other areas as well.
Yes, sir.
But in Texas, in other parts of the South, they played this game as though they didn't know. Obviously, you didn't have the internet, you didn't have television, didn't have radio. You know, I guess you had telegrams back then, whatever the tapping thing, what do you call it?
Telegraph?
Telegraph. Yeah, wire service. But, so when General Granger landed eighteen sixty-five, June the nineteenth, in Galveston, with a regiment to essentially enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. So that's what we're celebrating. And blacks, and some whites, but mainly blacks in Texas, it really became a big deal. Other parts of the country, Denver as an example, if you Google it, some of the biggest celebrations before it became a national holiday may have been from people, for people who escaped the South for whatever reason. Moved to California, moved to Denver, moved to other places. But it was primarily a Texas thing. Other places in the South had as well, but it was a big Texas deal. And I'll give you a little footnote in history. I was an intern around the State Capitol when the bill passed. Now here's the inside.
Making it a Texas holiday.
Making it a Texas holiday. Here's the inside track. It was either nineteen seventy-five or seventy-seven. I moved to Austin in seventy-five, started interning at the Capitol, just can't remember. I think it was seventy-seven, you can Google it and see. That was a big push around the country to make Martin Luther King's birthday a national holiday.
Right.
And it was picking up steam. Democrats controlled the legislature, everything. They were very conservative, obviously. Many of them moved over to the other party now. But here was the compromise. While a good number of the members of the Texas Legislative Black Caucus, Mickey Leland, Craig Washington, Cynthia Thompson, who's still there, Eddie Bernice Johnson, Bill Price, I think was his name, GJ Sutton out of San Antonio, they were pushing to get the King holiday and threatening to shut down the legislature from time to time. A group got together and worked up a little deal with Representative Al Edwards, that they would take Juneteenth to get some of the heat off, but they were not going to take the MLK Day.
Wow.
And here was the original bill. It was a optional holiday. It was an option. You could celebrate Confederate Heroes Day, I think it's in October, I'm just not sure, I can't remember now. Or you could celebrate Juneteenth. And obviously, you know, that was controversy.
Right.
I was just an intern, but even among some of the members of the Black Caucus, you know, sometimes I'd have to deliver the liquor, a paper or whatever. You know, I was on the Lieutenant Governor's staff, there were no blacks in the Senate. So I would hang around and all my friends were, you know, were working on the House side. So we knew what was going on in the back room, in these secret meetings that everybody talks about. But I remember when they had the dedication, it was a big crowd. A lot of people came up from Houston in particular. Representative Edwards brought them up. Obviously, you know, once it was gonna be the deal, all of the Black Caucus members were for it. But I do remember having a staff meeting and they said, okay, we have a new holiday and we know who's gonna be working on Confederate Heroes Day. And I remember getting ticked off.
Wow.
So I was the one who, who would get off on Juneteenth, I just worked part-time, Juneteenth. But I remember a guy named Malcolm, this white guy that worked for Representative Edwards, was reading the Emancipation Proclamation, which would have been later. It would have been, oh, January. So this was in June, but on Juneteenth, when we hit that first celebration, all of my friends from Texas Southern, I went to undergrad school here, buses of people coming up and we were out there eating watermelon on the steps of the Capitol. But look, I have even grown to appreciate it more over time. But for me, it's an opportunity to reflect, not just on how far we've come, but how far we have to go. It forces me to do things like know a bit more about the history of even Mexico, which abolished slavery before Texas did.
Before we did, yeah.
They had a president who was partially black, which may be why they took him out of office. But he abolished slavery in Mexico and it's a great book that I've listened to audio, Forget the Alamo. You know, they gave the impresarios several things they had to do. Pay taxes, it's somebody else's land, you gotta pay. You own somebody's land. He had to convert to Catholicism. He's hide as hell, who's going to church? Okay, we're Catholic. You had, for people who went to English first, you had to speak Spanish, fine.
Fine.
Buenos dias, you know what I mean? But here was a, here was a big one, you can't have slaves. Now what do you think the war for independence was really about?
Well, read the Articles of Secession, the Texas Articles of Secession. Eye-opening.
Yeah, so Juneteenth really is an opportunity, for me at least, to focus on the broader history. It is important and it ought to be more than just a day for people to take off.
Have a cookout.
Yeah.
I'm glad you said that.
That's nice to go and do that.
That's how this conversation got started, right?
And then I was, I guess, I think, in my opinion, the day is bigger than I think we all look at it as. And I guess I was a little, you know, the crowd was a little lackluster in size. I'm like, man, this is a pretty important day. And I think that's what the basis of our conversation was about. And then you forget that a lot of this started right here where we are. So my thought is that it should be a huge deal in Galveston, right? I mean, this is where the word first got out, if you will. So I just, my expectation, being in a parade, was this, this should be like every block in Galveston, this, there should be a parade route and a celebration and thousands upon thousands of people. So I think that's how this whole conversation, the Juneteenth.
It's very local, it's a great parade, but it's very local.
It is, it was, it was.
You know, you know how many people coming down from Houston to come and see the birthplace of Juneteenth?
Well, you know, by the way.
But now you've got the mural down there.
You have the mural there, but look, most of us, by the way, just think, this is a holiday. What do most of us do on a holiday? We holiday. Right? So, but it ought to be, most of us have no idea what Thanksgiving is about.
Yeah.
Or Columbus Day, let's not go there. You know, ultimate insult, you're gonna take Columbus Day and turn that to Indigenous Peoples' Day to celebrate them being essentially annihilated.
Right.
But look, it ought to be an opportunity to reflect. We never turned Galveston into, Galveston was the largest city in Texas.
Right, before the hurricane.
Yeah, one of the largest in the South. Obviously, you'd go wear slaves, speaking of Juneteenth. You know, most cities were along waterways, you know, not train routes, waterways, 'cause that's where you brought the slaves in.
Right.
But you know, I use it as an opportunity, I encourage people, maybe this podcast would do that, for people to learn about things like Cuny. Cuny Holmes right across the street. Having no idea how big of a fellow Mr. Cuny was and bold. And the fights, as I tell my Republican friends, he was Republican, but I said, you know, all of us were Republicans. Back to Daddy King's era, back to Lincoln. You know, that didn't change until Kennedy made an overture to a great extent. And then, you know, and then, and then they just went so far to the right in another party. But it's an opportunity, as is the case for most holidays, if people dig a little deeper to learn a lot more about our history, ought to know quarter of a million black people were freed on that day, or how they ended up coming, you know, the Emancipation Trail to come here, that's coming next.
Will you talk about that? Cause you do the bike ride, leading up to Juneteenth.
We do a bike ride and we, we start, Amber's cat enough to help me out with it, by the way, 'cause, you know, I guess, when I've been in the house, you'd think I'd been out there in the field with all this talking. I'd have gotten lynched.
Oh, Lord.
I would not, I would not, I would not have lasted very long. But so, we do it on, we're gonna do it June eleventh this year, that Sunday. Juneteenth, now you cannot get a hotel room at a reasonable price in Galveston. So I want my staff to go.
Well, Galveston's so popular.
It's so popular that weekend, that weekend in particular.
Is it because of Juneteenth or is it just such a nice place to visit?
It's, it's, it's popular certain times of the year. Now, most of us wouldn't go, you know, I would prefer to go in October, January or December. You know, said, if you, if you have an option, it's pretty hot.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, that weekend, because there's so many Juneteenth-related events or with the resurgence of Juneteenth.
Right.
Hotels are packed.
Right.
Really?
But we do a bike ride, is what Amber was alluding to. And we, I enjoy biking, so I encourage people, whatever you enjoy, we'll tour the historical sites. We'll have some folks come and talk with us. We may move that to September, when it was signed. The reason is, I feel so bad at a little black settlement. A woman who's a descendant of a slaveholder talks to us and gives us the history, but as some of the riders remind me, it's a hundred degrees, Rodney. We have to, when we get through, they're going back inside. We have to ride those bikes on Houston, about fifty people.
And it starts in Galveston.
Right.
Reedy Chapel, we started Reedy Chapel Historic Church there. You know, we'll pass by where General Granger gave his, when he, when he landed and said, this is, and read it.
Right.
So it's an opportunity, you gotta be subtle about getting people to learn history. This podcast will help, but you know, most of us.
Just can't put it in their face and think they get.
It's Memorial Day. How many people will really take the time to Google it today and know what's going on?
And honor what it really means, right?
No doubt, no doubt. Now, why is this so important to you, Amber? And I know, like I said, we were supposed to be in the parade parading, but it became this whole conversation of me wanting more, your expectation. And you knew so much of the history, I was really surprised, I'm like, oh, you really know this, okay, okay.
Well, at the risk of turning this into a Fort Worth podcast.
Cause you did say, you told me that before we even started, that this has a Fort Worth connection. I was like, I don't know that story.
Right, I grew up in Fort Worth.
I know that.
And for whatever reason, Juneteenth celebrations have been a big deal in Fort Worth. I mean, ever since I was little, so I was used to it. And they, you know, there was Blues festivals in Sycamore Park and, you know, we would, we would celebrate. And so then I graduate from high school and go to college and I'm talking to my friends about what they're doing this summer, you know, what are you doing? Are you, you going out of town on Memorial Day? Where are you gonna be Juneteenth? What about Labor Day? And they look at me like I'm crazy.
Juneteenth?
Yeah, they had no idea what I was talking about. And, and I realized when I got back to Fort Worth after law school and I was practicing law, that it was something, you know, I realized the, or found out the real history of Juneteenth and why it was a uniquely Texas holiday, at least at that, you know, from what I knew. And then the, fast forward, the grandmother of Juneteenth, Ms. Opal Lee, she's from Fort Worth. And she's a woman who at eighty-nine years old, decided to start advocating for Juneteenth to become a national holiday. So she took off on a walk to raise awareness for it. And that bill got signed, I guess, with Sheila Jackson Lee's efforts and urging, and yours too Rodney. That bill got signed in twenty twenty-one. So it's now a national holiday, right? And then, you know, there's, there was the myth.
Which is kinda very sad that it's only a national holiday, what'd you say, twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
With Biden?
Right.
That's, anyway, you know I'm gonna say that's crazy, but that's, yeah.
It's crazy, yeah.
And then, and you know, and can I ask a question? To my understanding, and Mr. Ellis, you might be able to help us with this too. In history books, do they teach about Juneteenth really in books? I mean, there's a lot of things they don't teach about in history books.
I never read anything about it when I was in high school or college.
Shouldn't that be, and, and I don't wanna get, I don't wanna turn this into a political thing, but shouldn't that, certain, certain things in history certainly should be in history books?
It clearly shouldn't, of course, in Texas, you know, it'd be whitewashed. I mean, most, most folks, as I was joking with Amber when we came in, when you talk about all this anti-DEI stuff, as a descendant of slaves, you know, I'm well aware that Western civilization, not just this country, but Western civilization was built on the backs of the slave trade. Everywhere we, everywhere we know. And let me tell you, if I had a couple of hundred years of abusing people, raping children, you know, just decide, you know, somebody acts up, someone will make them gator bait, just feed them to, all kinds of abuses.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, there's some people who don't want us to talk about that because they don't want to admit that we still have a legacy of it and people benefited from it. Now, my attitude is, if I got over it, what the hell are they mad about? I mean, look.
Facts is fact, right?
Yeah, I joke with my African friends all the time, you know our history? I didn't know this till Jesse Jackson ran for president in eighty-four. I was at some event with him in Chicago with some African leaders and he pointed out, you know, that was a role of complicity for African tribal leaders in the slave trade. Tarzan couldn't just run over and get all those people.
Yes, sir.
Not that many. So when you learn the history, you know, it's okay, get over it. As I, as I joke with my, my friends, once I was in South Africa and they were drinking too much. I don't drink, but people think I do. Somebody said.
I can attest to that, you don't drink, but people think you do.
Somebody said, you know, I was in the legislature then, Senator, you African-Americans were the weaker of the species. That's why in tribal wars, you were captured and you ended up being sold to the Europeans and ended up in America. And I was just sat there listening, 'cause they had guns too, you know, they drinking, girlfriends. So later on, I said, well, you know, when I think about it, in some ways, we draw back the connection to slavery as the genesis of black music in this country. Only unique American form of music, that pain, wherever that comes from. You go to these churches, where is that coming from? Some people attribute that to whatever it was coming through that. And I said, yeah, hey, the blacks in this country have the highest standard of living on the whole for any group of black people on the planet. On the whole, it'd probably be South Africa, even with all their problems and inequities. Probably the second highest standard as a whole for the country. Nigeria may be number three. And now, I'll point out to them, you know, you may say, I was the weaker of the species, but all y'all trying to get a green card. I mean, I'm glad I'm here, despite how it happened, I'm over it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's history, but we should appreciate it. Yes, that should be the story of Juneteenth in history books, but it ought to tell a complete story.
I never read it.
Not a whitewashed version of it.
I never read it.
Why do you think that fight is? And not just with Juneteenth, with all of it? Like, what would be so hard for there to be an amendment of, yes, this wrong was committed? We can still see how, I mean, it's, to me, it's very transparent that you can see some of these wrongs are why many people that look like us are still where they are today.
Right, the legacy of, the third line.
Why, just why couldn't you have, say, we get it? No one's saying it's your fault, it happened, here's where we are with this now. Now, what can we do together to try to rectify some of those ills? To me, to me, that would be, that's, that's to me, that what the real debate is. Not me trying to brainwash anyone, not me trying to get somebody to, you know, feel bad 'cause they're learning about it in class, it's not that. It's, it's truly the history of your country. To, to, to act like it doesn't exist, to me, is even more moronic, would be the word I would use. It really, really is.
Well, I think you answered it. You know, in no way would any of us think that we ought to try and ignore the fact that the Holocaust happened or ignore other tragedies in the history of humankind. But whatever we have done to demonize blackness all around the world.
Yes, sir.
Even in the black community.
Yes, absolutely.
You go to Africa and people buying the.
Absolutely.
Whitewashing.
Brazil.
Whatever we've done to help justify it or even use religion to do it. You know, Al Green, I heard him use this quote one day, that they attribute to Harriet Tubman. And, you know, some people say she didn't say it, but you know, it's documented, she freed a couple of hundred slaves. I can't remember the exact number, so I may be wrong, they can Google it. So the quote is that she said she could have freed another thousand if only they had known they were slaves. Now, whether she said it or not, it's a powerful statement, so that's why.
Somebody said it.
Yeah, somebody said it, you know what I mean? But you know, most people don't wanna, look, you go through the whole discussion, there are people who are semi-descendants of the slave trade. You know, when this country is giving away land in the West, gave nothing to those freed people. In the case of Texas, they just packed up, got out of Galveston, came here, nothing. And then you have people who have benefited from the largesse of this country and directly from the slave trade. If you go Google most of the wealthiest families in the history of this country.
Absolutely.
Marsh Rice, here, Rice University. Marsh Rice goes directly back to the slave trade. You know, most of the pillars of academia, of finance, that old money.
Yes, sir.
Going way back, well, that's where it came from. Now, I'm not angry about it, but it, it does offend me that the very descendants of those people, the ones who will fight the most vociferously to have anti-DEI policies, anti-affirmative action policies, because they don't wanna, they know the history, but they don't want others to know it.
If you acknowledge it, then you sort of.
What do you do about it?
Yeah, exactly, then you have to do something about it. Therein lies the rub, right? People don't wanna have to think about what comes next or what that means.
And, and honestly, none of us really truly know. Obviously, there will be an economic number for some with reparations, but that's a whole nother deal. We have to do that next, on the next podcast, reparations. Question though, I know there was a story as it relates to Juneteenth, an interesting story. Y'all probably, I'm absolutely sure y'all saw this. South Carolina, I believe it was Greenville, they were putting up banners with, you know, in celebration of Juneteenth. And you know, they were gonna do a week-long celebration and maybe a few, may, one in particular, it had a, a white couple on it. And there were, there were many folks that were furious about it. And the folks that put this together, they were, you know, they were looking like, you know, Juneteenth, it was about diversity. But as they sat back and said, uh, maybe a faux pas on that one right there. But I'm just curious as to you guys' thoughts on that. To me, I think, I hate to say it's a black thing, if they had a group of people in it that were multicultural, probably wouldn't have hit me too much, seeing the, the white couple with a smiley face. I probably would have been driving down the street and saw that banner, would have been like, what? So I'm just curious, just thoughts.
I don't know if I would, I, I think that, you know, I think about the George Floyd thing. And the struggle for black people in this country, if you related to George Floyd, when that officer shoving, shaving head his foot on George Floyd's neck, was an opportunity for people all around the globe to think about a foot being on their neck. Whether it was in India, you know, whether it was in Afghanistan. So I, I think the notion of suffrage, whatever it is. You know, I happen to be a male, but I can relate very closely to women having to fight for the right to vote.
Yes, sir.
For Hispanics who come to this country fleeing oppression in other places.
Who are segregated in Texas.
Yeah, who was segregated in Texas as well. So I don't know, I think that, you know, there are, you know, that this, I was, I was telling someone, you know, with all these murals we were putting up downtown, and I'm trying to be diverse and somebody said to me, hey, what about us, bro? And I said, let me tell you something, here's what's interesting. There's no doubt that my skin is black. But unless the name is there or something else, you won't know how many are Hispanics until I point out to you, you know, one you're looking at right now, that's Hispanic, that's Native America, you know? So I, I think the idea of suffering for all of us, as much as we can do to overcome it, you know, we should be inclusive. I, I could find nothing that, that I would be happy about than to see a classroom full of little white kids.
Learning about Juneteenth.
Learning about Juneteenth. As is the case to have Christians learn about the struggles that Muslims or our Jewish neighbors had to go through. So I, I think it's a, that, that would not, it would not offend me.
I like that, okay.
Yeah, that's a good answer, it still would have made me go, hmm.
And not in the, not in the, like I said, if I would have seen a picture of many people in a group together, I think I would have just, Juneteenth and seeing that couple, I'd have been like.
Some of the sensitivity with me is, most of what we think of when we see the flag and somebody climbing up a hill and a patriotic figure, is just really all white men.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, that's just not the history that we have endured.
Right.
Visual, visual wrong, but what they were trying to get across, probably right.
Yeah, visuals make a big, they make a big difference.
Okay, I, I think we can agree on that. Now, Mostyn, I have to ask you, why is this so important to you? I see you take on a lot of causes. I know that as a human being, you're truly about these causes, you're not just jumping on bandwagons just to do it. I mean, 'cause you know me, I'm a vetting person. So, you know, I've had, I had the opportunity to be around you for a long time and these things are near and dear your heart. And it was like, how do we need to talk about Juneteenth? I think, and I have to be honest, it's kinda interesting when you see this person of non-color and these kind of conversations are very important to her. She's very strict when it comes to women and empowerment for them and people of color. You're just always there and I'm just curious as to why. Cause some people could see it and be like, ah, it's just, ah, it's false, it's this, it's that. I know that it's, it's coming from a real place, 'cause I know you, so.
Uh, you know, I, the only thing I can say is I had good parents. I mean, really. And I grew up in a really diverse neighborhood. I went to a small Catholic school in Fort Worth and I was in the minority, truly. There were like five white kids in my class, the rest were Hispanic and like five, maybe four or five black kids in my class. And then, so coming from that, and then I went to like a college prep high school, everything changed and it was very different and somewhat uncomfortable for me. It, it just felt a lot different. I mean, I grew up speaking Spanish and going to my friends' grandma's houses with, you know, eating tortillas after school, right? Like, I mean, truly, so it was, it, it, my life after middle school, like into high school and college was so different visually than what, than what I had grown up with. And when I, when I got back to Fort Worth, I grew up on the South Side, so I moved back to the South Side and I realized that I had been missing like a lot of the diversity that I'd grown up with and that I was really used to. And then you get a chance to see how different things are for different groups of people. And, you know, my, my dad was a lawyer, I grew up with he and my mom helping people and helping all kinds of people and it, and seeing what a difference it made in their lives. And it was just a good example and it, like, it's selfish too, like, it made him feel good. It made my mom feel good, it makes me feel good.
Was she a defense lawyer?
No, he was a plaintiff's lawyer, he still is, yeah, yeah. He's still going.
So plaintiff's lawyer, meaning that people who were hurt by some corporate failure, he would represent them.
And he did do some criminal defense.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, I thought he did.
No, he did, that's how he started out.
Look, Amber is smart, she's sensitive. If she had been born in Kiev in an all-white environment, she has heart, she has a brain.
You think she would still be the same?
I think she'd still be the same.
I agree with that.
If you'd never been exposed to, and you know, and her, her late husband the same way. Some people just like that, you know, but a big part of it is, she has an inquisitive mind. And we want to encourage more people to think beyond the circumstance.
What they see and what they know, yeah, that's true. But I do think, I do think when you, when you grow up with or see or are close to and, and develop a relationship and, you know, and love people that are different than you, then it, it changes your heart and how you see things later and what you're able to see in a situation that other people who haven't had the exposure, it's just harder for them to understand it.
I got you, I got you.
You know, in this day and age, I must say, it ought to be very difficult for somebody, no matter where they are, to be close-minded.
Right.
Cause all you gotta do is.
You said it should be?
Yeah, just Google it. I mean, if you wanna know something about what happens to somebody else, just Google it. Yeah, well, that means they're close-minded and even if they grew up in the heart of a community totally opposite from whatever they are, they just remain close-minded.
All right, 'cause I know we're gonna rap soon, but I have to. So as you look at the condition of what happens now, and I don't wanna say politically, but I have to, the air of what's happening in society, let's say it like that. How can you, it's, I hate to use this line, 'cause it seemed like everyone said, it seems so divisive now. But is it, or is it just my imagination?
I think it always was.
Right.
But we just didn't.
We can see it.
We can see it.
Is it 'cause we're older, is it because of the news, is it social media?
Social media and a twenty-four hour news cycle. And then you have, you know, for whatever reason, I do think it's cyclical, but you have these like fascist tendencies coming out in political leaders who are, who are. coming out in political leaders who are, who are taking advantage of people who get fearful or, um, and manipulating them. I mean, we've talked about how the news is not always true, right?
Absolutely.
And, um, and, and people get manipulated and that makes them fearful. And I, I do think the twenty-four hour news cycle and the internet and social media has made it so easy for people to be manipulated. And it's, it has been way more divisive at different times in the past. But now it just has such an outlet and an ability to, to garner like support.
Yeah, okay, fair, fair system.
And everybody has a megaphone.
Right.
Just any, any hate monger, just get on there and start tweeting it out and, you know, and.
They could go to your page and start going in.
Yeah.
You're right, though.
And in my business, I can't block them. But for all you haters out there, if I could, I'd block you. If you catch me one-on-one, I grab your phone, I'll tell you what I really think.
And he won't be drunk. And he won't be drunk.
You know what? I'm, okay. I'm glad you did mention that. How, how is it to deal with people who don't agree with your, there's somebody right now looking at this that thinks that everything you said that's documented truth is totally one thousand percent wrong and, and, and has something to say about that? Just, and, and mind you, just because you're saying it, not Masten or me being here, like, they could, they could say so, but it's just because you. And this is what you have to deal with in your world of politics. I'm just curious how, how that generally feels and how you deal with it. You know, I used to think if somebody hated on me, I, I would always say, at least my mom and my kids love me.
Well, you have to have thick skin.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day.
You have such a good attitude.
Yeah, but you know, at the end of the day, the, the policies that I think by and large I could impact are more important than those detractors along the way. And it's okay. I mean, I get it. You know, look, there's so much pain and hurt out there. And it's just so much easier to, uh, be angry than it is to work through the problem. So, you know, you just.
It's a great motivator.
Yeah, you just try to be patient. I ride my bike. You know what I mean? I'd like to learn how to swim. It's a little late.
Never too late.
You know, exercise kind of helps.
I have to learn how to swim too, so me and you in the same place.
Or, or you go find something that inspires you. You know, I, I, uh, you know, sometimes you, I'll put on some music. You know what I mean? That things, and you know, and my faith, yeah, travel, and my faith in a lot of ways helps me.
Okay.
You know, uh, so at the end of the day, it's all right.
You travel a lot and you have good friends.
Yeah.
And you, you are a good friend.
Thank you.
No, you communicate a lot, you, you know, I think that.
Hey, I can, you know, uh, I can slip and have a candid conversation with a few people from time to time. That's therapy.
And finally, what's, what's, in your opinion, the best way? And listen, and Masten, I wanna start with you. What's the best way, in your opinion, that folks should celebrate Juneteenth?
Well, I think, you know, however you have been, if you have been.
Right.
And if you haven't, I find, you know, there's, there's a lot going on in Galveston. If you just Google that, um, starting, like, actually, right now, there's already Juneteenth, like, lecture series going on in Galveston. Rodney's got the bike ride coming up in a couple of weeks. We'll be at the Juneteenth Parade, what, the seventeenth?
We will be there.
The Saturday, that Saturday before.
Yes.
Um, and, and just learn a little bit about it. I mean, the mural in Galveston is really cool.
It's beautiful.
Um, it's super cool. Um, is it on the spot where Granger landed or rented?
It's a building that a family made available. They can use right off, off the strand.
Right.
So it's right there in the heart of the walking area.
Yeah, so go to Galveston, go to the candy store, walk down to the strand and, and look at the mural. Um, just, just to, you know, like Rodney said, open your mind a little bit to a history that we, we never learn about. Um, and I'll just make one more plug for Fort Worth because this will really make you mad. The National Museum of Juneteenth is gonna open in Fort Worth in a couple of years.
I love it. I love it. And there's a little cooler in Fort Worth on Juneteenth.
Maybe this.
In Galveston County or Harris County.
It's less humid, that's all.
Why would it be Fort Worth?
Well, because I, you know, like I said earlier, Juneteenth has just always been a big deal in Fort Worth and, um.
They're putting some money up. That means on a local level, they're willing to pay for it.
Yeah.
And you can have it right here. You can have another one right here.
But and Opal Lee is from there.
Okay, got you, got you, got you.
And she's still alive. She's ninety-six now. Um, another very cool thing that she does, so every Juneteenth, she has a two-and-a-half mile walk to honor the two-and-a-half years that it took enslaved people in Texas to find out that they were actually free. Um, and, and she does it virtual too, so you can register for it and it helps support.
And do a virtual walk?
I do a virtual walk and it helps support her foundation and, and, um, and then, and she's.
Now, you know, you can't say that and not have all that information, but that's okay. We'll, we'll figure it out.
Google it.
Whatever you wanna know, just Google it.
Google it. Yeah, no, seriously, then you'll probably run across something I don't even know about.
How about that?
Cool piece of history, you know?
Commish?
I think it's important on Juneteenth to do a little research, as Amber said. Thank you so much, both of you all for doing this.
No, thank y'all. Because it's a holiday, so I appreciate y'all.
I'm happy to have the two of you.
Yeah, and reflect on why did it take an extra two-and-a-half years? And with or without, we're all free, even today. There's still obstacles to overcome.
How did you remember last year during the parade, we saw, uh, a gentleman with a T-shirt on that said, "Free-ish"?
I do remember that, yeah, I like.
I like that.
Yeah.
I may find a piece of art somewhere to put up.
Yeah.
But it's a scary, just that phrasing though, it's pretty scary, "free-ish."
Free-ish.
And here's the funny thing, we all understand exactly what that means. And that's what it is. You're "free-ish." Scary thought. I'm just saying. It's twenty twenty-three.
You know, just always remember that, even, you know, our democracy, this is a grand experiment.
It's a work in progress.
That's fairly young.
Yes, sir.
In terms of the history of civilization, uh, and that challenge is to overcome. So you, it ought to be an opportunity to reflect on the need to be equitable about voting rights. You know, about economic parity. You know, the, uh, number of minority women owned businesses, all kinds of inequities that out there. And it may be late, but it's never too late.
Absolutely. Masten, Ms. Amber, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you do, all the community stuff that you do. I really appreciate you for that. All the fighting that you have to do and quietly that Amber helps a lot of folks with a lot of their fights.
She's my inspiration.
But thank you. You're out there, you know, swinging with, you know, with the big dogs up there too.
Thank you for what you do.
Look, I just run my mouth.
And tell them, we're over here on a holiday. We're out here, we're trying to add some purpose to another holiday, being here on this memorial day.